Welcome back to the Hampden Town Council meeting of August 18th, 2014. I almost said July. Next item, item 5D, proposed amendment to town charter, Article 9, referendum and initiative[27.77][27.77]introduction for public hearing. Sue, would you like to give a little background on this one?
Excuse me. The changes proposed in this one eliminate the words "order" or "resolve" from sections of Article 9 to make it consistent with the fact that the primary items noted is our ordinances, which is how the town deals. So it eliminates those and it adds the requirement on petitions for, that a person's signature on the petition is followed by the person's printed name and address on petitions for that.
Thank you. Do I have a counselor to introduce this for public hearing?
I'd like to propose, I'd like to introduce the public hearing, proposed amendment to town charter, Article 4, referendum and initiatives.
Thank you.
Article 9, I'm sorry.
Article 9. Item 5E, proposed amendment to town charter, Article 10, general provisions, introduction for public hearing. Again, Sue.
The general provisions items are changes that make the town charter consistent with the main Human Rights Act in the posting of prohibited activities by adding, "No person shall be appointed to or removed from, or in any way favored or discriminated against with respect to any town position or point of town administrative office because of religion, age, sex, the addition of sexual orientation, marital status, race, color, ancestry, national origin, physical or mental," and the word handicap is changed to disability, as I said, to make this consistent with the main Human Rights Act.
Thank you, Sue. Do I have a counselor to introduce this for public hearing?
I'd like to introduce this for public hearing.
Thank you. Item 5F, town charter, oh, all the public hearings for these items that we just discussed will be on the next council meeting, September 2nd. Item 5F, town charter, Sections 7 and 8 reviewed by Finance Committee, no changes are recommended. I will let Sue explain a little bit, this to you a little bit.
The, because the Finance and Administration Committee had reviewed these and the town attorney had reviewed them for compliance with state statute, no provisions of these two articles, one on financial procedure and one on nomination and elections, were deemed to require more changes. Article 8 already has a change that is, was amended in June 10th in regard to the districting, so that's already been taken care of, and financial procedure had no changes. And so it's put on the agenda simply as a notification to the public that this was reviewed by committee and no changes in those sections were required.
Thank you. Item 5G, future of parks and trails in Hampden, Counselor Shakespeare. Counselor Shakespeare, could you give some background, please?
I will, thank you. We received a substantial amount of money from Chevron Corporation for some remediation of their oil spill in East Hampden. I'm sure Sue can give more information on that if necessary. We ended up with an agreement to basically trade off and purchase what we call Turtlehead Marina, or Turtlehead Park is what we call it now. We had a parking lot installed, it's beautiful, and we had some trails installed through that remediation, and they're actually paved. What bothered me and why I brought this up was because that's it. That's all the money we had. We, the town actually spent very little, what, $16,000 or something like that, taxpayer money to accomplish this?
Yes.
Something like that. So we're very fortunate as a community and taxpayers to have this piece of property. I went down there and I was curious because I had heard, I was down there initially when they were working on a parking lot, so I couldn't get onto the land itself, but I took some photos of the whole, I call it, it's an inlet more or less, and an island and a peninsula and ran into a couple individuals who actually were from Hampden and had just finished walking it, and they said to me, "Is that it?" I said, "I don't know, I haven't been down there yet." They were disappointed as such in the fact that that's it, a trail through the woods down to the river, and that's it. So I took a walk and I took numerous photos and actually did some of my infantry crawling through the sumac. And I have these photos and when I get down to the end and near the end of a couple of different trails that go off, the chip, what we call the chip trails, I got through the sumac, some beautiful photos of the river, Penobscot River. And the last photo I have is one of what it used to look like when it was Stern Saw Mill, and you can see the sumac even back then. And sumac is not, as Tom Brand said, trees, it's more or less a brush. And anyways, I'm going to pass these to the counselors and they can look at this while I speak some more. We need to do something. We can't leave that nice park, per se, in that state because it's for the public, in fact, not just those individuals, but I talked to a couple of other citizens and they were, they were a little disappointed themselves. And what we need to do is take some action as a council for the community to develop this a little bit more. And when I say develop it, I don't mean put buildings on it, that we cannot do because there is a conservation easement on this piece of property, as our attorney will let us know, and we can only do certain things, but we can improve it as such. I believe, and our Economic Development Director believes, that we can eliminate some of this sumac and poison ivy. Right now, the trails were sprayed for poison ivy, but just on the sides. I've heard about us having picnic tables. Well, right now, I would not suggest, and I wouldn't want my kids, if they were young again, going into any of that sumac or poison ivies on the side to investigate. We have the kayak possibility of putting a facility in for that, but like one of the kayaks, kayakers told me, he says, "Do you see all the trails going off, your main trails into the woods?" Well, that's because there's no porta potty or other facilities for them. So anyways, what we need to do is, we need to decide as a council who the responsible department is going to be, whether we're going to do fundraising, whether we're going to do donations, or whether some of it will be taken from future taxation possibilities, which I know the public doesn't like to hear that, but we've got to think about picnic tables, the type and the placement, we've got to think about trash cans so we can keep the facility clean. Where are they going to be placed? Who's going to maintain them? Municipal signage is a big concern. I know we have talked in committees before about some road signage down off 1A, maybe having that, and what's it going to look like? Are we going, what are the park rules going to be? What are the hours going to be? Trail signage, I've already started personally, because I belong to the Hampden Historic Society, researching and accumulating old photos of that area, and it was quite an operation there where logs were floated down the river from up north and accumulated there, and it actually was the biggest saw mill in the area for a long time. Restrooms, porta potties, future ground cleaning, thinning of the altars and sumac and poison ivy treatment, and also a possibility, some establishing docks for boaters, because right now there is no place, if a boat basically comes up the river, for them to dock. Hamlin Marina has docking facilities and buoys, but they belong to individuals and/or they're charged for. And also Bangor has docking facilities, but I guess they're charged for at a pretty good rate if you pull your boat up there. I guess the harbor master comes running out with his hands out right away, looking for some, some fees. So anyways, I don't know if there's any, that's my introduction.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that have questions for Counselor Shakespeare about this item? Any counselors have questions? Okay, thank you, Counselor Shakespeare, this is certainly, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we both put our lights on, so I think both Tom and I have some things to say.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is one park, but there are other parks too, and we have a history of citizens coming together, like Jeremy's been spearheading some work at Paper Mill Park Road. He couldn't be at the Last Services Committee, but he sent a report. And the Boy Scouts have done a lot of projects, providing picnic tables and signage and things like that. And the Friends of Dorothea Dix have done, you know, wonderful work there. But we do have some, a new parking lot going in over near the industrial park that will give people access to some town-owned property, which has no trails in it. We walked it a month ago, was it, Tom? And, you know, it was very swampy and brush-filled and hard to navigate through. I don't know how much we can depend on citizen volunteers, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of organizing activity that's happening yet. It does seem like a good time for the Services Committee, right, to take a stronger role. I know we've talked about getting more involved in the Marina Park, but it's been something that at the time was more appropriate for planning and development, and it hasn't been handed off yet to Services. And I share the concern that, you know, we keep adding straws to the back of public services. We keep saying, "Well, now there's one more parking lot to plow, now there's one more field to mow," you know, and I think the department is a bit of, there are some miracle workers, sometimes I think that, but I think it's going to be challenging to figure out how to continue to do more with less. So those would be my comments. And thank God for all the citizen volunteers who do so much work.
Thank you. Counselor Brand?
No, my thoughts are along the same line. When about 10, 10, 12 years ago, Dorothea Dix Park was pretty much a mess because it had been disguided by the state and then Hampden assumed responsibility for it and then just basically ignored it for many years. And there were a number of citizens who came to me at the time and said, you know, "We ought to be doing more with that. After all, it was historic, it was the first state park in the state of Maine, and yet we're letting it fall into very bad condition because no one wants to take care of it." And that's when we started the efforts for Dorothea Dix, and Paper Mill Park was right on the list as, at the same thing. It was another park that had been abandoned by the town in terms of anybody being able to use it for a very long time because of BOD levels in the stream from agricultural activity in another town. And that got cleaned up. The Department of Revival and Protection and its rules and regulations started to take care of that for us, but we still haven't done anything, we hadn't done anything to take care of it, to use it. And Turtlehead was, it was a nice marina, but it was a private marina and the boats were there, basically, other facilities were there, just basically for people who wanted the boat, but there was no real access to the river. And that's the little last piece of corner of the town of Hampden that's available to the general public for, to get access and to see the river that they live next to. And I just think we're getting to the point here where our parks activity and our trails activity, we have a number of trails around town which haven't even been mapped or located, marked. We've had, in the past, we've said things, "Well, we ought to go out and mark where all of our town lots are and our town trails are so people know where they can go, we ought to make a map." Well, someone's got to do that work, and it can't be done by a recreation program because we're undermanned, we have one less person than we did a year ago, and we have one more park. And I think it's time for the town of Hampden to take a very careful thought and plan of what they want to see for Parks and Trails Program. And I think sort of managing it on the fly as problems come up is not a very good way to proceed in the future. You need to do more than that.
Thank you.
I left out the Wonderful Garden Club. They're a big source of a lot of beauty in the town and in our parks.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Yeah, I got to respond to that comment. Tom said about Dorothy Dix Park, "I worked for the town in the early 80s, I ran the Buildings and Grounds Department. We mowed, we took care of Dorothy Dix Park every week, so it didn't get neglected."
The top, the head of it, I'm talking about the entire park.
That was all that was there. Everything that was there, we took care of. And it's just like the Marina, the town developed the Marina, it belonged to the town, we maintained it, we took care of it, and the public had access to the water then. Since then, the town has given it away to get another one. But we had it once.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Sue?
Marina Park has a defined plan, which was developed at the time, which includes kayak launches and signage, et cetera, et cetera. And the town is pursuing additional funding for this from Chevron, who has some other irons in the fire and may be able to assist. But the, I also did a memo for the council, which was at the dais tonight, that it tells you how we do what we do, which is, you know, respectfully not on the fly in terms of programming for our parks and our recreation areas, is done through the recreation. And earlier this year, the council put parks and rec field maintenance and oversight in terms of inspections and what has to happen under building and grounds for Public Works entirely because of the addition of the Ski and Center to the responsibilities of the Recreation Department. However, I agree that it would be of the council to give this subject to either, planning and development and services are both dealing with park issues now, that if the council wanted a more comprehensive look at the management of those resources, both what you have now and how you wish to move that into the future, that now would be a good time to put that on the agenda for those committees. Because the other part of that, which usually ends up at finance, really is how the town wishes to fund this. Right now, the maintenance portion of our fields, mowing, repairs, et cetera, all of that is under building and grounds. And Recreation Enterprise pays for playground equipment additions and those kind of things. Porta potties, some come out of recreation, some come out of building and grounds, the addition of those kind of things. But the donation through a development opportunity of a parking lot to accompany trails that were in existence up on the former LL Bean parcel is one thing. And the Marina, which one accepted, had to have a complete plan, and the only thing missing on it is how to fund the rest of exactly what Counselor Shakespeare, which was talking about, which are the remainder of the amenities that go with that pool, and then how we keep it that way once it is that way. So as I said, I did a memo on, this is how we do all of this, which I think whichever committee you determined you wanted to talk about it would at least give you a background on what we're currently doing, and if you want to do it differently, where it comes from. It was, my hope with this memo is to be helpful to the council in figuring a way forward for the management of this, these resources.
Thank you, Sue. Any other counselors have comments or questions? Okay, so we'll look at putting this on one of the committees in the near future.
Well, the question is, which one? And that's, do we need a motion to put it on a committee? I mean, you say put it on a committee, well, we're going to put on Planning and Development, we're going to put on Services. Services is overloaded now, so I hear Planning and Development is overloaded.
Services is not overloaded?
No?
No.
Well, go ahead.
But it doesn't mean that some of the issues aren't planning and development issues, you know, really. So it seems like there's a logical handoff, you know, when...
I think as things come...
I think as things elevate to the need for Planning and Development, I think we get involved at that time, but I think the major, the overall effort, the major effort should come from Services.
I agree.
And then we'll get involved as you need.
But I think Services needs, Community Services needs to lead the charge on this. I'm just afraid that it's going to sit there and nothing's going to get done for a long time, and, you know, we get bits and pieces and, it doesn't mean we have to spend a lot of tax money or any tax money, but I think we need a goals and objective and a plan overall for the community.
I don't think... Should we have to take a public comment, because I think Jeremy is sitting at the end of the seat.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, because there's several different things.
So can we set aside our rules and take a public comment?
Are there any objections to set aside the rules so that he can make a comment? No objections, you may come to the podium.
Thank you. Jeremy Jones. The thing about the porta potty, that's the same issue that was at Paper Mill Park, that is a health, safety kind of thing. I'm pretty sure that's fairly easy one to do, just with a phone call, and I don't think much of the public would object to have a cleaner place, you know? But other stuff, obviously, in Services should be discussed for, you know, brush and stuff like that. And then your big plan, obviously, that's a bigger issue that can go through Planning and Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to your continuing active participation on that.
All right, so I don't think we need a motion, I think we can just put this on the next Services Committee agenda. Thank you. Item 5H, personnel loss development impacts Counselor Brand.
Well, this is another growth issue. You manage a tax base 10 years in advance, not this year, not next year. Back when we had a $21 tax base, a tax rate, we had a part-time planner and a part-time code enforcement officer, and we were getting little to nowhere, and we could start to convert those programs over and went to having full-time code enforcement, added Planning and Development, added a town, a community planner. And the idea is to promote growth and promote development by increasing the value of the town, increasing the services you have to offer, and revenue generating services. And I'm just concerned because we're going back to basically the kind of structure to get close to what we had 10, 15 years ago, and where the tax base was considerably higher, and we're gradually eliminating our ability to develop a broader tax base and to make changes, which ultimately 10 years from now will start to affect us. And it takes time to do these things. It took four or five years to get the Marina project done. Getting access to the LL Bean property has been 10, 15 years since the time we bought that, and that's just coming into fruition. These things take a long time because towns move very slowly, thankfully. And as we reduce the number of staff that we have around, the responsibilities of the remaining staff increase, and they have less time to invest in future endeavors rather than just stomping out fires that happen to be handy, close blazes at the time. And I just think that, you know, we need to take a very careful look at how we want to develop the tax base over time, rather than just worry about how much we're going to collect one year to the next. And I don't see us doing any of that. And I see personnel, personnel that we've been losing lately have been very valuable personnel for the development process, and I don't see that we're moving in a direction to replace those, the people that have been leaving. And I think that's going to slow our development efforts, and it's going to make it more difficult to meet the goals that were set by the council way back when I first started, and that was to broaden the business tax base and reduce, to reduce the burden on residents, homeowners. And that doesn't happen on its own, it doesn't happen because someone would like to be nice to homeowners. It takes considerable amount of effort in planning and support, and I just don't see how we're going to continue to do it in the future. And wondered if the rest of the counselor was concerned.
First, we'll take public comments on this issue. Are there any members of the public that have questions or comments for Counselor Brand? Yes.
Terry McAvoy, 59 Monroe Road, District 3. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what Counselor Brand is implying, is that there was some correlation between hiring a full-time code enforcement person and some whatever position he was referring to that led to a decrease in our tax rate or something? Or that these individuals had some direct impact on the development of the town? Well, if that's the case, show me where it is. I would love to see it. I just don't see where any development that's taken place in this town could be directly attributed to any one individual. I can't see it. He referred also to the Marina. Well, this town had absolutely nothing to do with that. This is because, you know, the federal government was whacking an oil company. We just happened to be the place where it happened, that's all. Had nothing to do with the personnel here, other than developing it or doing whatever, you know, administrative people do. As far as replacing the people that are leaving now, I thought that that was already taken care of. I don't see any need to hire any more people to take anybody's place, and certainly not in the Recreation Department. I think the Public Works is more than capable. I think they have whatever personnel they need to satisfy the needs of what we have right now.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Public comment closed? Are there any counselors that have questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Shakespeare?
Yeah, what Mr. McAvoy just said, one statement, whatever administrative people do, indicates to me that he's not aware of what administrative people do in the back room. Code enforcement officer, Planning and Development, our GIS, our IT, Economic Development, Conservation, all this, all these individuals are key players in the development in the town of Hampden. When we're, for instance, HE Sergeant, we just went through a procedure there and a process of... process of basically turning over a good piece of our business park to him for future development, which will benefit the town of Hamden in the future substantially, tax-wise, and that's what we're trying to do. The annexing of the ammo park to our business park is a big deal for the town of Hamden. A connector road from that ammo park onto 202, which is in the process of being developed, will be a big deal for the town of Hamden, because all those lots in there will be taxed, they're business lots, okay? All this, all these individuals, administrative individuals, even in the front office, every place in Hamden, they're necessary, they have, they're knowledgeable, and losing our code enforcement officer, in my opinion, is a big deal. Losing our IT girl, the GIS is a big deal. They all interlink each other.
Woman, she's not a girl.
Did I say girl?
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my apologies. Anyway, that's Gretchen I'm talking about. So, you know, it's a big deal, all these together.
Any other, thank you, any other comments from counselors?
Yeah, I think as a counselor that I certainly don't want to be involved in personnel. I feel as though the personnel goes to the town manager. We're here for policy. We set the policy, and the town manager runs what we want to do, and her directions and what she wants to do on that, I say she because at this current time Susan is our town manager, is the way it goes. If we don't like the way it's being run, then we can replace the town manager. But I think we have to fully back the town manager and just establish the policies. And I certainly don't want to get involved in personnel, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, and it's really tough when you do lose a good person, but you replace them.
Thank you. Yes?
So, I guess my question is, I was under the impression that the code enforcement officer is being replaced. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, we haven't lost anybody, we're still going to have somebody in that position. And I also believe that there was advertised for the IT position, so we haven't lost that either, have we?
The GIS IT special position is advertised. The person currently in the position has given a resignation date of October 2nd to allow the town sufficient time to advertise and hopefully get someone on board before she leaves to help with the transition.
So, I guess my question is, they keep saying we've lost them, okay, people do move to other jobs, we cannot control that, that's their own desire. But we have filled those positions, so the town of Hamden isn't losing any ground. We might be losing some expertise that they had, but we still have people in those positions, correct? Or will have.
The code enforcement position has been replaced, there is someone working in that position as of the time that the former one left. The advertisement for GIS IT runs through the end of this month, I think August 28th. Is Denise, is the 28th the last date of applications?
Yes.
The 28th. The concern regarding expertise levels, our former code enforcement officer Ben, who's with us for 11 years, had some plumbing experience but no code experience when he came to us, and he turned into a very good code enforcement officer. I believe that the combination of Jason Lundstrom in the fire inspector role and Miles Block in code enforcement, that their goal will be good customer service and attention to making sure that the codes and ordinances of Hamden are followed in that regard. The replacement of GIS IT, that position was, grew like topsy, is the best way I can, because when the position started, it was GIS IT, and then along came Stormwater, and she had an interest in Stormwater, and we provided training, and we provided assistance for her to get up to speed, and she was a forestry major, and the town had forestry needs, and we paid for certification for that. So, people come to us with various levels of expertise, and the town has a history of sort of growing its own in terms of providing additional training and expertise so that people can wear more than one hat. Now, when they leave, it makes the town more vulnerable for a period of time, until somebody else grows into some new hats, but I can commit to the council that the staff that I presently have, and wherever we go in terms of this next position with Gretchen leaving, will continue to be committed to processing and doing anything development-wise that the town can do now, and if needs change from now, then the council will be apprised of the fact that those needs have changed. Our current staff that is, that remains has considerable expertise in all of these areas, and it is my full expectation that they will act as a resource to the people who are in the position now and will continue forward, and that the town of Hamden also has the opportunity, should it need to, to access the expertise of people in these positions in other communities, which we do on occasion as well. The concern about our tax base and how it's divided up, I share the 86-14 concern about percentages of the tax rate. Residential development is and has been huge in Hamden and continues to be. We did 56 new homes in Hamden this past year. That's, that is more than we've done in any year since, in the past 14, and in the early 2000s, we were, there was a lot of development going on. Trying to catch a $600 million valuation when 86% of that $600 million is residential, the amount of millions you need in business development to catch it is, to even move a percent or two, is really amazing. And so, what the council and planning and development has been doing with regard to the triangle and with regard to that, is something that actually stands a chance of moving those percentages, and the process we have that's been established is not going to change for how we deal with people who want to develop in Hamden, which is to provide them with as many resources as we can in order to continue that. I think it would be healthy for perhaps planning and development to look at sort of what the goal is for, how much do you want to move the valuation, and then that will drive what happens in the areas that have been identified for that development in Hamden, and if it is at a point where current staff or we are so overwhelmed with applications for development that we can't handle them, then we'll need to make adjustments in personnel. Right now, our biggest problem is losses of institutional knowledge in these two positions. That's a problem. However, we still retain institutional knowledge in many areas, and I'm confident that everyone turns to and does what has to be done in order to make it work. Our public safety director is here this evening. Code enforcement works for public safety, as does the fire inspector. He's the department head, charged with filling this position and has done so. My conversations with him are that he is confident that the combination of personnel in those positions now will be committed and continue, this is their primary job. This is, we have not gone to part-time anything. These positions are full-time positions, they remain full-time positions in this expertise. So, I would hope that the council doesn't, believe me, we don't want to go backwards in terms of how we service the businesses that you're trying to attract here, and we will do everything possible to make that move forward.
Counselor Lawless, did you have a question before?
Just like two brief comments. One is, I've been on the council for six years, and I think we have remarkably low turnover. So, the fact that we have, you know, two key people who are leaving in a short period of time, I don't think indicates anything, it's just the way events happen randomly sometimes, and they're leaving for their own reasons. The other thing is, the Marina involved a lot of work on the part of a lot of people. It wasn't just true that Chevron came along and said, got a great plan for a park, you know, here's a check, and nobody had to do anything, it was very complicated, so...
Counselor Shakespeare?
Yeah, I think this discussion has been good that Tom Brandt brought it up. We need to discuss these things now and then. Sue, you mentioned one word there, and a lot of the public prob, internally, we know what it means, we know what the four mile square means, we know what the triangle means, but a lot of the public out there may not. Can you just explain that, so they know what the triangle is?
I apologize. The town's comprehensive plan identified areas of the community that were best suited for growth and development in residential areas and in commercial or industrial business areas, and the area that we call the triangle is defined by I-95, Colebrook Road and Route 202 in Hamden, with the primary areas being the town's Business and Development Park, the ammo industrial park that abuts that and will have access through it, land owned by H.O. Bouchard that is along the top of the, top, I picture it at the top, it's along the interstate to Colebrook Road, and then areas of land on the Colebrook Road as well. That triangle is what I refer to when I talk to about, talk about where the Planning and Development Committee has been looking at possible development opportunities that connect from Colebrook Road all the way over through the town's business park through...
Yeah, it encompasses our business park, the ammo park, which is accessed off the Oddland Road, and also the LL Bean property-
That's correct.
-that we acquired a number of years ago. And like you said, all that property coming down the Colebrook Road owned by H.O. Bouchard, which may be for future development in the town of Hamden, if things go...
It's more than 500 acres owned by Bouchard.
Right. And the four mile square, I just wanted to say, is the area going up Route 9, 202, up to the Mayo Road, and up there to the Kennebec Road, and back down to Kennebec Road to 1A, all the way back down, and that's actually the route that the bus takes when it leaves Hannaford. It's what we call the four mile square, so just so the public knows. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors have comments or questions? No? Okay, we will move on to committee reports. First one is Services and Communications Committee, Counselor Lawless.
So, we met last Monday, and we had a report, although he wasn't there, we had a report from Jeremy about what's going on with Paper Mill Park, and that was much appreciated. And we spent time going over a questionnaire, which is a data gathering effort that the state is putting together, and there's a woman working with the Bangor area who's collecting data from different towns, and it was about the resources that we have available for citizens for physical activity. And I think it struck everybody who was there, and I think pretty much all the council was there, if I remember correctly.
I understand.
You weren't there? Oh, okay. Well, you missed an interesting review, because I don't think we always appreciate just all the amenities that we have in town and all the opportunities there are for citizens in terms of recreation and exercise. So, just about nine times out of 10, when they said, "Do you have this?", we said, "Oh, yeah, do we ever, you know, we have this and this and this." So, I think when it comes to filling in the gaps and applying for grants, we look like, you know, a wonderful community, and we'll have an official-looking report that characterizes the community too. So, I think it was a worthwhile use of people's time. I don't know how other people think, but that's what I think.
Thank you. Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Ryder?
The Infrastructure Committee meets Monday night this time. We don't really have any comments on that.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Saroy.
Yeah, we met on August 6th, and we had a conversation with Chip Lake from Sargent's Corporation about mitigation and covenants. He, direction from the committee, he's going to work with Dean on putting together some recommendations as it pertains to mitigation and trying to help them work through that issue as they develop the property and the industrial park, at the same time trying to streamline or take some of the burden as it pertains to covenants. Dean is going to work with him, put together a proposal. Myself and Counselor Brand will meet and have a conversation and bring it back to planning and development for further conversation. We also had Chief Rogers come in and speaking about fireworks update. We had a resident complain about fireworks. Chief Rogers came in and spoke about the fact that we've had very few complaints, we've had no injuries, no fires, and a lot of the concerns that were brought up are already covered in the current ordinance. So, rather than put additional restrictions or, the thought is, as things occur, to elevate to law enforcement so they can address according to the ordinance, rather than putting restrict, newer restrictions out there or new ordinances out there. There was a presentation done on private ways, I was a little confused about it, it wasn't a complete doc, and I talked about that, Sue, it was kind of, I really don't understand why it was brought to the, brought to the committee. The other thing we talked about was, again, the conversation, Gene, around the Turtle Heart Park implementation plan, and, you know, we'll work closely together, two committees, to move that forward. I do want to address, you know, some of the comments made about, you know, the individuals that work in this, for the town, and really support not only us as counselors, but the residents. And I will tell you that a lot of the things going on in planning and development could not have happened if it wasn't for the efforts of Dean. My interaction with him, since I've been the Chair of Planning and Development to this point, knowing what he's done prior to my arrival, prior to me being on the council, everything that has occurred over the past few years, the development of the park, Turtle Head Park, what we're working on with Sergeant Corporation, industrial park, what we're working on in the ammo park, conversations beyond that with natural gas and connectivity. I think it was Counselor Shakespeare that said, "It just doesn't happen. We get the money, there's a lot of planning and effort that goes into it." So, I will say that the individuals I've interacted with, at planning and development, especially Dean, have been invaluable, so just want to give them a shout out.
Thank you. And Finance Administration, we only did one thing, revision to the proposed pool fees increase, which we talked about today. We'll be in for a public hearing next meeting. And Managers' Report.
2014-15 tax bill should be in the mail by Friday, August 22nd. The first half will be due by Wednesday, October 1st, to avoid interest. A reminder that nomination papers for district council seats, as well as four school board seats and one seat on the Water District Board of Trustees are available and must be returned no later than Thursday, September 4th. So far, we have had one person take out papers for Districts 1, 2, and 4, and two persons take out papers for District 3. Four persons have taken out papers for the four available school board seats, and no one has yet taken out papers for the Water District Board of Trustees.
one has yet taken out papers for the Water District Board of Trustees. The State Department of Agriculture and the State Department of Environmental Protection have collaborated to provide collection of unwanted pesticides from homeowners, family farms, and, uh, greenhouses. Collection sites will be in Bangor, Presque Isle, Portland, and Augusta in October. It is necessary to register in order to participate, um, to register, you can get details and learn more about the program at the Bureau of Pesticide Control website, um, at ThinkFirstSprayLast.org. And then there's a phone number, 287-2731. We will be putting this information on the town's website and, um, cable TV station. In looking at it this afternoon, there was no, there were no dates cited in October, or times, or locations in those towns. So we are going to call tomorrow to see if we can, um, get more specific information on this. There is no, um, regional hazardous waste collection this year, um, like there generally is in October, so this will give people a chance to, um, get rid of one of the few things that we don't take at the town, which is the pesticides, at no cost. The, um, Justin.TV is no longer in business, or whatever, it's no longer on the web, it is defunct, and we are looking into alternatives to allow live streaming to continue. Justin.TV was the vehicle we used prior to, that's no longer working. I, it's not that, it, it's just not there anymore. There's just a sign on the website saying, "Thanks for X number of years of whatever", but, um, the, it's my intent, unless the council has an objection, to include a statement with the property tax bills this year that cite the, the, what contributed to the increase in terms of proportionally, you know, dollar-wise, from school, county, and the town. Anticipate, um, reaction certainly, but I, I think that not all of it lies at the, this Second, I had a question. We, we taped the school board budget meetings, and we aired those, and there's been a couple meetings since, and we have not aired them. Starting in September, again, when they're, you know, schools back in session, is it the desire of the council to continue that taping and airing the same way we did the budget, or is that-
Just the budget.
Just the budget?
I think, I think someone brought it up-
I think someone brought it up on the council to sit there and talk about, um, books and, um, you know, I, I think the most important thing is just providing information to the residents of Hamden on the budget process, and with the outcome of that process. That's, my, to me, is the most important thing, other than that.
Yeah. Is that, is that the consensus of the council, or is, is this something that you want?
Well, I agree, but the only, the only, the issue I've got is that it was voted on by the council, so I think it would have to be voted on again by the council, not, not to do it.
Okay, well, I will put it on the next agenda for consideration, if you are of a mind.
Any other, if I may, the other question in reference to that was, also, there had been a decision to send out a second notice about the school budget or something, remember we voted on that also? A second notice in the mail, wasn't there, a decision at one time?
It was going to be on the agenda for the meeting, it never happened.
Yeah, I, it, I believe that, and also, uh, I believe that it was, um, it went out on the quarterly, that's what it went into, and there was going to be another one, I believe, sent out that it didn't happen.
Never happened, yeah, and what, and it was going to cost like $1,500, and, and I didn't agree with it, doing it, but it was voted on to do it, and, and, I believe, and, uh, I didn't think it was needed, but, if you could look into that, Sue, anyways.
Sue, I think it was something about timing, they were so close together that we just-
Yeah, it probably, probably did, but-
There was additional information that Counselor McPike had that was going, he was presenting, that was going to be distrib, distributed, the meeting on-
But you did.
The June, it was a June meeting.
Yes, I had, I had additional information, and that meeting did not take place, so that information never got to the council, or out to the public, and then it was too late after that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll, that's it for you, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Counselor comments, we'll start with Counselor Saroy.
Uh, no comments.
No comment? Nothing?
Oh, I have to urge people, if they haven't noticed it yet, that there's an ice cream stand in Hamden, um, that's there. It's a temporary thing, it's a, uh, a trailer, and it's two local Hamden people, it's called Wild Cow, after their two names, a husband and wife. Not to go on for too long, but she was a, um, a chemistry and physics teacher, and she took her scientific expertise and has perfected the art of ice cream making. Um, and I went there yesterday and got two pints, which we are slowly savoring and consuming. It's wonderful ice cream, and they're just going to be here through Sunday in the afternoons to evenings. Um, they're hoping to maybe establish a, a permanent presence in Hamden, so it would be encouraging to them if, uh, they made some good sales while they were here, and if we cheered them on, so, be nice to have an ice cream place in Hamden.
Gene, could you let people know where that is, because I actually didn't know about it?
Okay, so, um, if you're at, uh, Hamden Academy, the parking lot that's right next door, that shots, right?
The old Hamden Academy.
The old Hamden Academy, yeah, that's, that's where it is, it's in that parking lot, and the ice cream is wonderful. I think they were motivated by Children's Day to come here for that day, but they stayed. Normally, they're at the Bangor waterfront, so it's the Bangor, um, concertgoers who get to benefit from the ice cream, but for this week, it's us, so take advantage of it.
Thank you. Counselor Shakespeare?
A lot of individuals who have lived here a while used to call that the Lounsbury shot, Lounsbury's parking lot, because Lounsbury's, the grocery store, used to be there. But anyways, I want to thank Counselor Saroy for his comment on the fact that nothing in Hamden just happens, basically by itself, there's a lot of planning that goes into things. Um, and also, uh, it was a good meeting that, tonight, uh, we agreed to disagree on many things, and, uh, that's okay. At the end of the day, we agree or we disagree, and, uh, we move on. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no comments today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.